Chris, you look lovely this evening.
I'm not going to pursue this any longer. Well, um, okay, fine. I am.
Okay.
I'll have to use another device because she's, no way she's going to change the name on her phone.
Okay. We are live, folks.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much, Karen. Uh, welcome everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to, uh, the Select Board meeting of, um...
Twenty-six. Oh.
I'm reading the date of, oh, here we go. Yes, October twenty-sixth.
Hi, Mike. Are you frozen?
I'm reading twenty, three thirty twenty. I'm thinking, wait a minute. No, no, no. That was the one, unfortunately, the state of emergency began.
Yes.
So, this is our meeting of October twenty-sixth. I'll introduce folks. Uh, my name is Jim McCaffrey, Chair of the Board. We also have joining us Mr. Peter Germain, the Vice Chair, and we also have Erin Underhill, our, uh, clerk. Karen, um, Murray is our Operations Manager and guide through the computer land here. Mr. Gazinski is also with us. Mike Gazinski, the Town Administrator. And we have some others who will be, uh, we will be calling upon to make either presentations or announcements. So, welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. Um, we do have a couple of announcements before the meeting. Um, one of them is in reflect, reflects on reminding people about the, uh, the, um, Election Day. So, I'd like to, I think Kathy Smith, the Assistant Town Clerk, is on with us. Maybe Kathy, you could just recap for folks what's in store for this week in terms of early voting and then Election Day next week.
Okay. So, for early voting, what we, we're open tonight till seven-thirty. We have Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, eight-thirty a.m. to four-thirty p.m., and Friday, eight-thirty a.m. to five p.m. So, Friday's our last day for early voting. We'll be open on, um, Tuesday, November third, from seven a.m. to eight p.m. here at the Town Hall, nine-hundred Main Street for in-person voting.
And then can you just tell us about the, uh, you know, the mail-in and the dropbox? So, people will be reminded about that as well?
Sure. So, we've had over two thousand mail-in ballots come in. Um, we've had about over a thousand people come in and, um, personally early vote this week, uh, last week, actually. Today's Monday's the new week. And then, um, the dropbox is located, um, to the side of the building near the Council on Aging entrance.
Great. So, lots of opportunities still to vote, as well as the opportunity to vote on official Election Day. And we will be following, uh, safety protocols for folks who come and vote in person. Just take your guidance from the clerk's office, wardens, and others that are there to help you vote, uh, make your vote count and to vote safely. So, thank you to the whole thing that's working so hard to make that happen. Um, we do have, we wanted to also announce or reinforce the, uh, announcement, if you will, that we've been making the last couple of meetings about town meeting. Town meeting is scheduled to be held on Saturday, November seventh. It's going to be an outdoor meeting. It's going to be held at noon. Hopefully, the weather will hold out for us all. And the location is the high school parking lot, which, uh, a team is working on to assemble the seats to make sure that we have protocols again in place that people can attend the town meeting, um, safely and participate in what is certainly in the United States of America, the purest form of democracy there is, where everyone who has an interest or a right to vote can come and vote on all the warrant articles that are presented. So, again, that's going to be Saturday, November seventh at noon in the high school parking lot. Last item I wanted to just quickly go over, and Karen has it on the, on the screen here. It's just a reminder again, this week, this weekend, of course, is, um, Halloween. So, um, we in Town of Millis, working with our Board of Health, have posted on our website, um, some guidelines for safe, uh, a safe Halloween celebration, um, urging people to take a look at this, urging people to continue to, uh, observe the appropriate protocols. Um, and, um, the, the website includes this information here that you can take a look at. Um, and again, we're, the town believes that you can have a safe and happy Halloween if you follow these protocols. Um, so, we urge everyone to do so and to try to especially avoid crowds, avoid certainly crowds indoors. And hopefully, um, everyone in the town will be able to enjoy a, a wonderful Halloween celebration. Okay. Um, those are the items we wanted to, uh, wanted to at least get out for announcements. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any announcements that they'd like to make.
No announcements. Thanks.
Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is an important, uh, opportunity for the Town of Millis, uh, with the direction and leadership of the Select Board to make some plans for Recognizing Veterans Day, which is coming up on November eleventh. We have our Veterans Agent here tonight to talk to us a little bit about the proposed proclamation, proclamation, and also a couple of other items that, uh, he would like to share with the rest of the town. So, I will turn it over to our Veterans Agent, Mr. Moore.
Okay. Um, thank you. This Thursday, um, nineteen, or the, sorry, the twenty-ninth of October, uh, from two-thirty to four-thirty, um, Millis Community Media and myself, we're going to set up a, uh, you know, set up a table and a camera, and we're going to launch, uh, Operation Thank You Veteran. Being veterans, we've got to name our operation. And, uh, it's going to be simply Millis residents, uh, you know, to show their appreciation on camera, socially distanced, um, to go on camera. And, and hopefully, we have enough people where maybe it's about, you know, five-minute reel of people thanking family members or just thanking veterans, um, in general. So, uh, again, that's, uh, this Thursday, the twenty-ninth, we're going to set up, uh, at the monuments right outside of Town Hall. And, uh, that has been publicized on the Millis, uh, uh, community websites and, uh, also Facebook. So, uh, the word is out there. I got a few likes. So, um, you know, hopefully, people in the building can come down. I'll, I'll bring my family. So, we at least have about ten or fifteen, uh, thank yous going out to the veterans. So, uh, that is, uh, this Thursday again. And then, on the eleventh, um, at Memorial Park, um, American Legion Post two oh eight, they're going to have a small socially-distanced ceremony. Um, the other thing of notice, their hundredth anniversary, um, of the founding of the American Legion Post here in Millis. So, that's a significant event. So, they're going to have two ceremonies, uh, on the eleventh of, of November, um, Veterans Day. And the proclamation, um, I'm seeing this up, up on the screen. And is that something that I should read now or?
I think usually the clerk reads that. Is that right?
Right. Usually, we have the clerk of the board read it, so then the board act on it. So, um...
Okay.
This is the moment where we allow the clerk, who's just been presented with this information...
Right.
...to guess her thoughts. Apologize for the late-breaking development. But if you could, um...
Sorry, Erin.
That's okay.
Read this, uh, proclamation that we would like to, uh, vote on this evening.
Okay. "In nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation, calling on our nation to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation. Our nation has fought and continues to fight battles around the world. The world, the words of that first proclamation still ring true. Let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not be, should not have been, in vain. We remember with somber and grateful hearts those men and women who have served the United States of America with distinction and valor as sailors, soldiers, airmen, and marines, and offer our sincere prayers for those who continue to defend the principles on which our nation was founded. The state of Massachusetts is home to thousands of our nation's military families. We are proud to recognize our country's veterans and extend the appreciation of our citizens to those who wear the uniforms of the United States Armed Forces and serve on the front lines preserving the freedom and liberty. We, the Town of Millis Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty-twenty, as Veterans Day in the Town of Millis, and encourage all townspeople to observe and appreciate the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans who fought for peace and defended democracy in our land and abroad."
Thank you very much. Um, so, it will be, uh, then, this is the proclamation that we are going to take a vote on. I do think we do want to make a little edit, um, where we say, the Board of Selectmen, we want to edit that to say the Select Board. So, when we finalize this and sign it, we can have it, uh, what the, uh, Millis Town Charter now refers to as the Chief Executive of the Town, which is the Select Board. So, um, thank you very much to Mr. Moore. Thank you very much, Erin, for reading it. Um, I don't know, Pete, if you'd like to say something or make a motion, because we would like to, I'm sure, as a board, um, take a vote on this, issuing this proclamation.
I think I just want to comment that we all appreciate what the vets have done. As you know, I did serve, but there are many in this town, including Erin's husband and many others who have served. And it's important to recognize the efforts of those who are both in uniform and who have worn the uniform. Um, it's an important contribution and one that should be recognized at all times. And having said that, I would move that we accept this Veterans Day proclamation as stated with the annotation as noted.
Second.
So, it has been moved and seconded that the Select Board, uh, adopt the, um, the Town of Millis Veterans Day proclamation, marking Veterans Day of twenty-twenty. Um, I would also like to echo the comments of my colleague about how important we think this is and how frankly it is with, um, both pride and humility that Select Board members are able to take these actions. Uh, and were able to take these actions because of those who have served their country. So, with that, I will poll the board to adopt the Veterans Day proclamation. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So, if we could, um, in the office, make that one a let it and ask then the Select Board members to, um, make their way to Town Hall as they can and sign the documents so that it can be read on Memorial Day celebration. So, to Mr. Moore and the veterans both, thank you very much for joining us this evening. It's good information that you've given to us. We appreciate, continue to appreciate your efforts on behalf of not only the town, but the Millis veterans. So, thank you so much.
Uh, I just wanted to ask too, Mr. Moore, if you could just send me the information. I will also put it on our, the homepage of our website as well as, um, on the Town Facebook page about Thursday.
Okay. Very well.
Thank you. And...
Okay. So, uh, the next item we have on our agenda is an appointment to the, the DPW. So, uh, we'll turn it over to Mr. Gazinski and Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in your packet, um, you'll see the application of Mr. Paul Everett. Um, and we did have a, an opening for the positions of Heavy Equipment Operator Laborer in the Department of Public Works. Um, Mr. McKay and the DPW Superintendent interviewed Mr. Everett, um, as well as one other candidate. And, um, uh, I would like to, uh, request that the board, uh, ratify my appointment of Mr. Paul Everett, uh, as a Heavy Equipment Operator Laborer for the Town of Millis.
There is a place called, it was in the, um...
He does have experience. Um, uh, if you look at his application, he has prior construction experience and, um, uh, comes highly recommended. So, I don't know if Mr. McKay is on the line. If he is, I, let me turn it over to him for any other comments.
Thank you, uh, Mike. And, Mr. Chairman, this is position, it's not a newly-created position. This is the one, if you remember, last month, we were here, uh, and the person turned the position down. Um, so, we're lucky that, that Paul, you know, did apply. He's a new Millis resident. He lives in Millis. So, that would be very helpful, um, for short commute time to respond to work. Um, so, again, I, I do hope myself and, uh, the DPW Superintendent did interview him, and we feel very pleased that it's, I think it worked out for the best. Um, that the other person turned this position down and, and Paul did apply, like, the day after he heard that, uh, the other person, you know, turned the job down. So, he does have, um, he has a Class A license and he needs, in within one year, he will have to get his two-B hoisting license. And he is going into his physical, so I would ask that the appointment be, um, made as of Wednesday morning. Sorry, I don't know that date.
Sorry about that.
So, it'll be Wednesday?
The twentieth.
Okay. Wednesday, October twenty. All right. So, his physical is scheduled to be done by then, right?
Yes, by tomorrow morning.
So, the, the only reservation on the appointment would be to obtain a two-B hoisting engineering license within one year of employment date. Is he, is he ready to start work on Wednesday?
Yes. Yes, he is. He's already, uh, I believe, Karen, you got his, uh, query check was done. Karen did that Thursday?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Did you see the weather forecast, Jim?
Yeah, that's why we want to get him in here, uh, on Wednesday.
Please, no snow.
Snow? I didn't see that.
Yeah, we did.
I'm afraid so. Um, this is not welcome at this time. Oh, well. Um, so, any questions, comments from my colleagues on, um, this proposed appointment? Sounds to me like he's a well-qualified individual. It's good to have him here in town. Um, and, uh, I'm glad that he is ready, willing, and able to get started. So, questions about the candidate or anything else from my colleagues?
No, thank you.
Yes, silence is golden. So, um...
Make a motion if you want.
You need a motion. Yeah.
Okay. I move that we ratify the, um, Town Administrator's appointment of Paul...
Everett.
Everett. Thank you. Of Paul Everett, effective Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, uh, with the stipulation that within one year of employment, he obtains a two-B hoisting engineering license.
With the modification of he has to also pass his physical on, by that date, I will second the motion.
So, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve the Town Administrator's appointment of Paul Everett as the HEO Laborer working for the Department of Public Works, subject to the successful physical and the two-B hoisting engineering license within one year of employment, with the start date to be Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. So, I will poll the board. Uh, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
And so, we're going to be at full strength, right?
This will bring us to full strength, yes.
Back to, back to full strength. Terrific.
Good timing.
Yeah. Hope it's not as bad as the trees falling down. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Um, the next order of business, um, scheduled for six-fifty-five, but, um...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we do have appointments for an on-call snow removal worker.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yep, I jumped the gun. Okay. So, Mr. Gazinski on the on-call snow removal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, it's part of our, um, uh, restructuring our building and facilities management, um, for this fiscal year, where we reduced one of our facility managers' positions and have some, an outside contractor handling some of the cleaning. Uh, we do need intermittent assistance with snow removal, uh, for our buildings. Uh, it's simply too much for one person to handle during a major storm. Um, so, um, we are, we were seeking, um, applications and, and people interested in helping with a position of, um, snow removal for on-call, uh, mainly to deal with, uh, the municipal buildings during storms. Uh, we did have a, an interested applicant, um, who, uh, uh, Mr. McKay and, um, Karen and myself did meet with, um, and found to be, we felt very suitable for this position. His name is Michael Cafro. Um, and I am requesting the board's ratification of my appointment, uh, of him as an on-call snow removal contractor. Um, I don't, Mr. McKay may have some added pieces of information, but, uh, we believe that this will assist us greatly in getting through this winter with snow clearing.
Thanks, Mike. Um, Mr. Chairman, with, this is not the first time we've had this. Uh, we have had, uh, a con, snow contractor. We actually do it with, uh, snow plowing machines in, at the DPW. But we also had a, an assigned person before. We hired the full-time second, um, staff person for the library and the police station. And we always, um, had an on-call person that did it for four years and was very successful. Um, and I think that Michael, that, that the person that applied for this job would fit this. Uh, he was very eager. Um, he, you know, not that it makes a difference, but he, he just wanted to get out. He's working from home, you know, during this time, and he sees that right through the winter. And he feels that this would be good exercise for him to, um, you know, to get out of the house, whether it be an hour or two, which is, that's pretty much what this is. You know, in the library and police station, need to be, you know, the sidewalks need to be salted and sanded. He would be called. He would be an hourly-rate, uh, paid employee, not, there's no minimum. Um, so, if he had to come out and, you know, salt with Paul wasn't here yet or whatever, he would come in for an hour or two. And, and like I say, this has worked out very well in the past, and we don't see why it won't work out again.
Uh, can I just, just to clarify, I want to be sure. This, so, the supervision rests with you and your team, Jim?
So, it'd be myself and Paul. I mean, Karen will do the payroll for it, but, um, yeah, be myself and Paul will, will be the overseer of this, yes.
Okay. So, he'll be working for you and for Paul in terms of main, it's really part of the building...
Yes.
...for maintaining the buildings to make them accessible, et cetera?
Right.
Okay.
And just to add in, after, we were speaking with Paul, and Paul typically, when they were doing the snow, we used to have, we had a different position over at the library that, like Jim said, that was, that was doing that position. They tend to work together to keep each other safe when it is a heavy storm. So, they'll go from building to building together. So, it's nice to have someone also kind of with you, um, when the weather gets really lousy. So, I think they'll do well together.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board members?
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
Great.
So, we'll take a motion.
I'll move that we endorse the, uh, Town Administrator's recommendation that we have an on-call snow removal contractor, and that that, at this time will be, and I cannot find his name, and I apologize. Oh, yeah, Michael Cafro, is it?
Yes.
Does he have to pass query and, uh, physical?
Yes, and a drug screen, yes.
Okay. So, contingent upon those.
Second. Sorry.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded for the Select Board to approve the Town Administrator's appointment of Michael Cafro, uh, to the position of, uh, snow removal contract on on-call basis, subject to completion of his query, drug screening, and physical exam. So, I'll take, poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jim. So, um, but maybe you don't want to leave quite yet. Um, our next item is appointment of an at-large member of the, uh, Community Preservation Committee. Um, the committee is, is a, is a, uh, a group that is responsible for the administration of the Community Compact, I'm sorry, not Community Compact, Community Preservation Funds, uh, that are part of, um, the real estate tax program here in town. And membership includes a member from the Select Board, the Planning Board, and also, uh, some other boards, as well as at-large members who have volunteered their time to make contributions to this important program, um, that, uh, that, uh, you know, we've enjoyed as, as a community for many years, and it's certainly a hard-working group. Um, Mr. McKay has served as a member, uh, representing the Planning Board. Um, he's left the board, and now there's a new member, I think it's called O'Reilly, if I recall correctly. Um, and the CPC, uh, apparently believes that Mr. McKay can continue to make important contribution, and he's willing to do so. So, they have asked us to consider appointing Mr. Jim McKay to serve as an at-large member of the, uh, Community Preservation Committee. And so, I'm just going to verify, Mr. McKay, your willingness to do so.
Absolutely. Um, working with that committee and the, and the group of people, I, you were on that committee, and Erin is now on the committee. Most of the same members, um, as you know, we lost, you know, Ann in the past year, was a great member, um, who was very much in tuned, it was a great teacher to, in everything that she did. Um, it's a, it's, I mean, one of the only boards that you go in and you act, you, you really enjoy yourself. People get along. People discuss. You may not always have the same opinion, but everybody walks out, um, you know, knowing that they did the right thing for the residents of Millis.
Thank you. So, um, with that, I would, uh, I don't know if the chair is on the phone. Is he, is he with us this evening, Mr. Maltinsky, or I didn't see him?
I don't think so.
I think he's still in Pennsylvania.
Okay. I mean, if he was there, I would want to give him the opportunity to speak. But, all right. So, that being the case, um, I will make the motion that the Select Board appoint, uh, Mr. James McKay to serve as an at-large member of the Millis Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have a term for this, Karen? Is this an annual appointment?
Uh, CPC is annual.
Okay. So, it'll be for the balance of this term and subject to reappointment. Um, so, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Mr. Jim McKay to serve as a, an at-large member of the Community Preservation Committee. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And the motion is carried unanimously. Welcome back to the committee. Okay.
Mr. McCaffrey, may I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
Mr. McKay, uh, maybe you know, maybe you don't, just because you're familiar with the area, but how's the cleanup going for Oak Grove and that area? I know it appears to have been hit pretty hard.
Yep. So, I, I believe that, um, some of the DPW went in and they cleared the courses so people could still walk to the trails, uh, last week. And we, we were not able to start picking the trees up. I know that, uh, the two chairs of the, um, the Starborough Commission and the Oak Grove Commission are going to go to the Finance Committee looking for funds to have a private contractor come in and clean it up. It's, it's, as you just stated, it's devastated there. Uh, you know, there's trees out on Ridge Street that, um, I just was speaking to, uh, the Chair of the Oak Grove Commission right before I came on the meeting, that, you know, we may have to change some of that allocation of, of taking care of Ridge Street with that forty thousand dollars that, if Town Meeting approves it, um, you know, uh, it, it, just take a ride up there and, and just take a walk around. And, um, it, it's pretty bad. Um, it's, I think it's right where a touchdown and it went at that field, it bounced over, and it went to, uh, right across the street, and it moved right down to, right down towards Main Street to Village Street.
May, Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Can we reuse any of that wood as firewood for people who might not have the ability to purchase what they need for the winter and allow that to be done?
That's a good question. I can, I certainly will follow up with the tree warden and the tree company that gets the bid, um, because that may be their, out of their price to... It's a, but it's a good question, and, and I, you know, I'll definitely follow up with the, and see if that... definitely follow up with them and see if that can be done.
I appreciate that.
I guess that, yeah, we can have a little conversation, it's not quite on the agenda, but I assume that, I want to make sure that we're doing things in coordination with what the community as a whole is doing. If it makes sense, to hire an outside contractor, be the same one to do this work, as opposed to any kind of one-off kind of activity, which I think might make sense, but it might not. Any thoughts on that, Mr. McKay?
So we have our Pathfinder that has our contract for the town, and he is one of the people bidding on the clearing of it. But because of, well, it's still, everything's town, everything's town-owned, we felt it would just be better to get, you know, the three bids so we can go through the process. You know, clearing of the big trees, you know, we will come back for an approbation of an appointment, because that's actually covered under the blanket policy that we have with the Mass Municipal Association. But this is a little out of the ordinary, so that's why we feel that we want to get the three bids. So it would be a cleaner process for Lisa and Carol, more than anything.
Well, I, we certainly agree that we'd like to get this cleaned up. I just want to do it the most cost-effective way, that's all. And we all know that with our best efforts, we still don't have the right level of funding for tree removal, but we got to get, we got to get something.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, there was also a little bit of damage to the farmhouse. I don't know how it managed to escape major damage when you look at the way the trees fell all around it. It was as if it was in a bubble, but it did, a window was damaged, the electrical box was torn off of the building. That is all covered under our insurance policy. However, trees, fallen trees, is not covered under our policy. So that's why we're also going to the, looking for extra funding for this.
Right. But we're working on it in a coordinated way.
Correct.
Okay, that's the point I was trying to make. Let's, as we all know, the Oak Grove Farm Commission and the Historical Commission are citizens who do 150% of what is expected of them. I just want to make sure that the community and the town is working with them to support their efforts, that's all. And I'm sure we were, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that that's the case.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Jermaine, yes.
Quick question, then. I realize we're asking the town for $40,000. Should we try to ask for more, or is it too late to even consider doing that?
The only way we could do that is move money from something else.
Okay.
We've been advised by council that what we can't do is increase the appropriations that are, that people have notice of.
Okay, that's what I was asking, see if there was any way around it. I knew that pretty much, but I wanted to make sure.
Well, there's always creative ways to do it, but it couldn't have happened at a worse time in terms of the fact that, you know, so much was baked already. Well, it could have been a worse time, I suppose, and it could have been a worse disaster, but as I understand it, the strategy here is to find out what it's going to cost and then look for a reserve fund transfer. Is that right, Mr. Kaczynski?
That is correct. I believe that they're seeking to meet with the finance committee on November 4th for a reserve fund transfer. They're just finishing gathering up their information in regards to quotes and making sure they're, have included all the necessary work in regards to this. So the finance committee has agreed to meet with them on November 4th.
Excellent.
All right, so let's have that item on our agenda for the second then, so we can be sure that we're all in the sync here. Not in sync. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. The next item I have on my agenda, I'm going to, we have an appointment at 7:30, but we have several other items that we would like to cover, so we're going to jump to those. First of them is the acceptance of a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, which is related to COVID-19. Mr. Kaczynski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if a representative from the town clerk's office is on the line or not, but I do want to congratulate them for their work in applying for a grant through the Center for Tech and Civic Life for a COVID-19 response grant application, which has been approved in the amount of $5,000. And this will assist the town clerk's office in the elections in many ways and moving forward with their processes. And again, I believe, I don't know if anyone else is still on the line from the...
Come on, Michael. Kathy.
Yeah, so again, I'll congratulate you and the office for getting this grant, and I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about, you know, how those funds will be used.
Yes, please. We're excited to get the grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life to promote secure and safe election. And Sue Lisa and I are fortunate, we have Chris McCaffrey helping us with recruiting and training manuals, Bonnie Hilton helping us with early voting, and Joanne Trushon helping us with mailing out early voting ballots. So it's been such a great help to us. We're so fortunate, and part of that grant will help with those tasks that we have to get done prior to the election.
Great. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the grant. So we're asking this evening for the board to just formally accept the grant on behalf of the town as required, so we can go ahead and accept that grant and be able to utilize the funds for those purposes.
Well, I just, yeah, I'd like to just ask Kathy to expand a little bit, because this is something that, the initiative came from the town clerk's office, the staff and the team, so I just want to make sure that she tells us a little bit about the process they went through, and, because they had to pull it together, I think, very quickly and ungladly. They did so, because if they didn't take the initiative, we wouldn't get this money.
Right. We found out about the grant through the mentoring group for the Town Clerks Association, and we had talked about it, and we had sent it to our election warden to take a look at it, and we thought it was, you know, appropriate. It's basically to make sure we provide a safe and secure election for the people. So two of the big sponsors are Facebook and Google to this grant, and many towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have applied for the grant. It's based on, we got $5,000 based on the size of the town. So through our Google group and our mentoring group, we're talking about different ways that we can use the money. And because we've had such a turnover with election workers, training was a huge, a huge thing that we wanted to make sure all of our new election workers feel comfortable and understand the process and that. So we've been fortunate to have our election warden and our assistant election warden and Joanne Trushon helping us with all of that to get prepared for November 3rd.
Any questions, comments from the board members?
Just a comment, congratulations, and thank you for putting in the work to get that. It's excellent.
I'll second there.
So again, Mr. Kaczynski, you're asking the board to, exactly what do you want us to approve it, or?
Yes, just a vote of the board to accept the grant on behalf of the town as presented.
I move that we accept the grant from Center for Tech and Civic Life for the COVID-19 response grant application in the amount of $5,000.
I'll second that.
So it has been moved and seconded for the select board to accept the grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life relating to the COVID-19 response grant program in the amount of $5,000. So I will call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is under Hill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Again, congratulations to you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Through hard work and perseverance, we will get through this election, and the town of Milis will count its votes in a timely way and certify them, and then move on to the next rate-humid adventure.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now I can move to a couple of, is Jen Scanell on?
She is.
Hey.
Okay, because we have two items, Stormwater Utility and the Clyde Brown Bond Anticipation Note Renewal.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Scanell, Treasurer Collective for the town. I'll start with the stormwater commitment. Just to give you some information, the annual bill was mailed out on October 16th, and it is due November 16th. The total stormwater utility commitment is $674,946. Before I ask the board to approve the commitment, I just wanted to inform the board and the residents that a section of Glen Ellen was overlooked and not included in this billing. So in a decision not to hold up the main billing file, we decided that we would issue a smaller commitment for the homes that were missed in that area in the next few weeks. So I'll be back before the board in a few weeks for that smaller commitment. So tonight, I'm asking the board to approve the stormwater commitment in the amount of
I was looking for my stormwater bill.
You were one of the ones we missed. But it will come.
I can't wait. Hopefully, we're not missing out on the real estate taxes. Okay, questions from the board, comments?
None here.
So I would take a motion to approve the commitment, knowing that we'll get a supplemental one in a few weeks.
Correct. Pete, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I'll move that we approve the stormwater utility commitment to the collector in the amount of $674,946, with the understanding that there'll be a supplemental bill coming out covering those who were not included in this bill very shortly.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the select board to approve the stormwater utility commitment to the collector in the amount of $674,946, which is the outstanding amount so far. So I'll call the board on accepting the commitment. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is under Hill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Next item is the bond anticipation note.
Good. So last Thursday, the town conducted the sale of a $470,000 bond anticipation note. This note is to fund the construction of the Clyde Brown Elementary School project. So before I ask the board for the approval of the vote, I'd like to give a brief overview of the total project costs to date and what the town has received in grants and what has been permanently financed to date. So as you're aware, the town authorized $51,765,857 at the November 6th, 2017 town meeting. I don't think it's much of a surprise that the total projected cost has been significantly under budget. Right now, it's projected to be about $48,700,000. So to date, we've received $19,904,67 in grants, and we've permanently financed two bond sales. One was for $25 million, and the second one was $3,250,000. So by the spring of 2021, the project manager should have a much tighter range on costs than we do today. They're pretty confident in coming close to the 48.7, could even come in a little bit under. But again, they won't have that final number until the spring of 2021. So since the project is not finalized, we are renewing at this point the $470,000 in a bond anticipation note, basically a short-term note which matures October 29th, 2021, and the interest rate is 0.65%. So I will be back in front of the board in a year either to permanently finance this amount, or depending on what the final number comes in, we could pay it off with unspent bond proceeds at that point, if it did come in under the 48.7. So tonight, I'm asking the board to approve the vote prepared by Lock Lord Bond Counsel to the town relating to the town's bond anticipation note that sold October 22nd, 2020. I'll take any questions.
I'd just like to comment, for the purposes of folks in town, I believe we are going to invite the ESBC Elementary School Building Committee folks to attend our meeting next week to give us the update, which is basically where they stand and very, certainly very consistent with what Jennifer just gave us, but a little bit more detail. And, you know, basically, the building is completed, but some of the exterior work is still going on. So I've asked the ESBC chair to come to speak to the select board and to the town to give us his rundown of the project, the substance of the project, not simply the dollar. That certainly looks like a favorable outcome in terms of the town's ability to deliver this project under budget. So any other comments, questions from the select board members?
Nothing here.
Nothing here.
Okay, so then we'll need a motion to approve the bond counsel's recommended vote, which I can make. I'll make the motion that the board selects, I want to approve the vote document provided by Lock Lord Bond Counsel to the town for a bond anticipation note, $470,000, maturing on October 29th, 2021, with an interest rate of 0.65%.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the vote prepared by Lock Lord in this amount. Certainly, it's a favorable interest rate. Sometimes, scratch your head, because the interest rates are so low, but let's, we're getting the benefit of it. The town's taxpayers are, as well as many others who are in the bond market these days. Anyway, so it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to call the board for approval of the vote. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is under Hill?
Yes.
All right, that motion is carried unanimously. So unless you look down for anything further?
No, just a side note. I know just that documents are at the selectman's office. They need to be signed by tomorrow morning if you haven't already had the chance to do so.
The chair signed already. I will have other documents to sign as well, however. But yes, both Erin and Pete will need to come in tomorrow morning before noon.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Before noon?
Before noon, very strict.
I'm on a tight deadline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item that we have on our agenda prior to, well, actually, I may defer for a second on this, because I'd like to jump to scheduling. Board members have been provided with a recommended or suggested schedule of meetings over the next several months. I wanted to actually ask the members to take a look at this. This confirmed that we're going to be able to attend meetings on these dates. We have, as we indicated, the 2nd of November, which is a regular meeting next Monday, a week, not quite a week, but almost a week prior to the town meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for the 5th, in case we need it. We'll know better after Monday night, but we'll post that meeting in the event that we need it to clean up any last-minute items, but pretty much that'll be it. If we don't have to meet that night, we won't. So I just have that out there, because, you know, in order to meet, sometimes you have to have a meeting posted. in order to meet, sometimes you have to have a meeting posted. Um, so then Saturday, we will meet before the town meeting, again with any changes we have to make to get ready for town meeting. Um, this will be our first live meeting in quite some time. Actually, the first time the select board has been together in person since the June town meeting. Um, so it'll be a rare treat. Um, jackets and ties are expected, Pete. He must be on mute.
I tell you.
Jackets and ties are not required. That's what I meant. Um, then of course, we have a meeting the, the Monday uh, the week before Thanksgiving. Um, and then uh, I've got an item here I'd like to spend a few minutes on, which is to target uh, perhaps one or two meetings to uh, actually do the stormwater abatement hearings that we've been promising. Um, I think that we'd like, I'd like to try to get that done mid uh, mid-November here uh, because people have been waiting for a long time uh, to have their hearings uh, heard. Uh, I don't know if there's any um, opportunity, feelings of any members of the board that either in, you know, some kind of daytime might be more convenient for some people. Um, although, you know, we certainly want to be uh, available to those who want to come and talk to us about their stormwater issue. So I'll just, for a little bit of conversation, what, what do you think is the best approach? Targeting that middle of November?
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Um, I don't know who works, who doesn't work, and so forth. I think though that we do know who all the people are who have applied for the abatement. It'd probably be a good thing to try to uh, send an email or reach out to them in some fashion to ask them if they would prefer to have a midday meeting versus an evening meeting. It may be possible for some of them that, that they may prefer to have a midday meeting, in which case we can probably accommodate that. But that would be my view of it at any rate. I think we should try to be flexible. This has taken a long time for some of them to even see, to get to this level, so.
Um, I can, I can be available. The only day that might not be great is a Thursday if it's during the day, but otherwise I can make arrangements.
Uh, okay, so we have a meeting scheduled for the 16th, and so there'll be business to conduct. Um, the next, those Tuesday and Wednesday, the 17th and 18th. Um, if folks feel as though that might work. Um, I mean, I'm willing to send out a note. I'm, I agree with you, Pete, we'll, we'll give them a choice. Would they like to meet, let's say, midday on the 17th? Um, or evening of the 18th? And see what kind of response we get. Trying to be flexible, as you indicate. Um, I don't remember how many of them have, but you know, it's going to take us several hours to hear these things effectively and get uh, have the people get their opportunity to speak to us. So uh, I, I guess I would throw out the 17th and 18th as, as target dates. Offer um, 17th as the daytime and the 18th as, as the evening. If you offer too many multiple choices, you're going to get many multiple answers. And I'd like to direct it a little bit, but. Do my colleagues feel as though that's something that we could try to do?
Yes.
Is there a particular time you want to throw out for a start, starting time during the day, Jim?
Um, well, I, I guess that um, again, as, as sort of Pete alluded to it, people have work schedules.
Right.
We have a little, I have a little bit more flexibility. That's why I'm perfectly willing to start at 10:00 uh, on the 17th, and then, you know, perhaps 6:00 on the 18th.
So I'm thinking we could send out like a doodle poll or something saying, here are the options, what works?
That sounds weird.
Does anyone know what a doodle poll is?
It's a great idea.
Don't get too technical with it, please.
A former select board member got, turned me on to that, actually, and it's very helpful.
Well, I have used it, so I know what it is.
But I'm thinking then you could, you could split it up. You know, if you have a bunch of people, we could try to, you know, group them all together during the day, and then, yeah.
Well, I mean frankly, if everybody says I want to meet on the 17th of the day, that tells me that I've got a lot of people interested in the daytime, and I might suggest some of them come the 18th during the day.
Right.
I suspect there's going to be folks in both camps.
I'm sure.
Folks who would like to meet in the evening and folks who prefer to meet during the day, so. All right, well, we know who these folks are. We know their email addresses, right?
Yes.
So let's send out a request and let them pick.
All right.
Now, when you do, if you do that uh, doodle poll thing, do you need to have a time?
Well, that's what I'm thinking. We could look at it and say, you know, we could start it, say, between 10:00 and 4:00 or something, but um, what are the preferred times? Or, I don't know, maybe initially we just send out between day and evening, we can figure that piece out. That way we can block them together. Obviously, you don't want one at 11:00 and one at 4:00 and nothing in between.
Well, we'd certainly prefer to do them one after another, yes. But not, not to race through in case people have, you know, uh, a lot of information they'd like to share. This is not a five-minute hearing. I mean, they get the chance to have their say.
Yes.
Okay. All right, why don't we target the 17th and 18th, as we indicated?
Okay.
Uh, and then we will uh, go off to Thanksgiving and whatnot, and we won't, we won't meet again until December 7th. Um.
And then from the state.
Yeah, I know. Looking at it, I'm thinking, oh goodness. Um, and then we have dates uh, that I've listed here, uh, or that Mike and Karen put together, which is sort of the every-other-week schedule. Um, turns out it results in a um, um, what shall I say? Um, a schedule that has a little bit more activity in, you know, I'm sorry, February. That's primarily because we do our budgets then. We're asking the board if there's, we'd be comfortable with um, here a, a daytime weekday uh, presentations for the budget. In the last couple of years, we've done it on a Saturday. Um, this is an opportunity, this is a suggestion to consider a Wednesday instead of a Saturday. Um, any, any thoughts from the board members that'd be willing to do it that day? Again, it's an all-day affair. I mean, it's, as, you know, as Mr. Jermaine knows, and I'm sure you're aware of it, Erin, and this is an all-day affair, but uh, to some degree, it's accommodating our department heads by meeting during the weekday.
With this notch notice, I can pretty much make anything happen, so that, that's fine for me.
You, you will make some very happy department heads if we don't have to drag them in on a Saturday.
Okay. Well, let's just target that as our date, then. That'll be our plan. Um, and what I was going to do also is suggest that um, we reach out to the other two member, the other two boards, school committee and um, uh, finance committee to get on the calendar for the early part of January for the tri-board meeting leading up to the budget season. Um, I don't think forcing it into December is necessary, but earlier we get going in January, the better. Uh, we, I think we met a couple, a couple of last few years, we met early in January. I'm talking about, you know, 10th or 11th, something like that. Not the 11th, but around that time, or maybe even a little earlier. So if my colleagues are comfortable with that timeframe, I'll do an outreach to the other two chairs, and we'll try to come up with a time and get it on everybody's calendar so that we can, you know, plan on it rather than trying to scramble around at the last minute.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, very good.
Since I'm stuck at home and not likely to be traveling this year.
Well, I mean, the sad part is that it doesn't look too promising for February either, does it?
No.
Oh dear. Anyway, all right. So um, I appreciate that. We'll, we'll uh, come back to our scheduled meeting, and then we'll finish up by going through the town meeting warrant articles and the motions for the town meeting. Um, so at this point, I'm going to ask if we, if uh, Mr. American, are you on?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. So uh, thank you. And at this stage of the game, what we are going to have a conversation about, a second conversation with the full board on the proposal for a um, uh, affordable housing project under the local initiative uh, at address 232 to 248 Main Street. We had a meeting earlier. Um, I believe that there's been some further work by the contractor and Mr. American, I'm not the contractor, but the developer and Mr. American. And perhaps you could go back to uh, the material that you sent us and sort of walk us through uh, what you'd like us to hear about this evening.
Sure, I'll uh, share my screen here. Tonight, uh, I have with me Phila Ramo, who is the applicant and the developer, and staff, who's the project architect, and Dean Harrison, who is our 40-week consultant. So one of the takeaways, at our last meeting, the board basically asked us to go back, have some conversations with town staff. You indicated that you wanted to ponder some questions of your own, and then bring us back. We did have some conversations with town staff, and uh, part of the conversation revolved around the discussion about trying to create some more open space on the site. So the applicant went back with their project architect, and uh, they were, they were able to with the same number of units. So this is a, a proposed 48-unit affordable housing project. Um, it, it's a rental project. So as you know, uh, if it were to be approved, all 48 units would go to the town of Milis's affordable housing count, even though only 25% of them will actually be affordable units. Um, what the applicant did was, they took, basically took the, the same building footprint which we had, which was a, a two, I'm going to call it a two-and-a-half-story um, module, and they shrunk it, and they took off one bank of units. So they shrunk each of the back two buildings by 25 feet in width. They did this by basically changing the third floor. Um, they're still three-story buildings. They still have sloped roof lines. There are just, there's more on the third floor in the back two buildings, which kind of works out because it's further back in the site and because it's lower in topography than the front of the site. So you're not going to notice it, really. And what that does is that frees up an extra 50 feet in these areas for green space. And, you know, the architect kind of prepared this layout where the green space was all added around the perimeter areas. I prepared a, a concept layout where we added that green space in the middle, you know, for a, a little playground or something like that, or a garden or something. Um, so there's, there's plenty of opportunity there for us to play around with the layout and change that and work in. But I do think that, you know, this is a nice improvement to the project. You can see that in the front buildings, it just has a, a little bit of a lower roof line in this building. It has uh, one-bedroom units on the third floor. It's a lot of roof line. In the back two buildings, we've got now a combination of one- and two-bedroom units. And the architect has um, been careful at the ends of the units to create more of a, a broken-up facade, so it looks like a two-and-a-half-story or a two-story with a gable-end facade on the end, so that if somebody were looking at it from the end, the massing is reduced um, considerably. So we're here, um, I think as we mentioned at the last go-around, um, the developer would like to do this as a LIP, which is a local initiative petition, which is something that involves the support of the select board. To advance in that process, the applicant is prepared to file an application with the state um, to advance this as a LIP would involve the select board taking a vote to support the project and co-signing the application. It's a separate application process for LIP than a regular 40B comprehensive permit. Uh, we did have some discussion with staff about utility topics. Uh, the board's intimately familiar with the sewer conversations in town. There is also a discussion. Mr. McKay has indicated that he would like to do some additional looping of water mains in this area of town. Um, unfortunately, he indicates that the, the, the loop that he would like to do is a quarter of a million dollars' worth of work, which is, is not something that a project of this size could absorb. This is not a, a very big project in the grand scheme of things. The applicant, however, is willing to contribute funds, um, and we could work out, you know, how the town wants to take those funds or whether they want to apportion them to specific activities. Some of the funds could be set aside for future water main improvements. Um, and the applicant is, is thinking that perhaps $2,000 a unit is a fair figure to address water and sewer issues. That would be a total of $96,000. Um, and that would allow the town to, you know, either do some II work or uh, do some II work in combination with setting aside some monies towards a future water main improvement project down in this area. So with that, uh, I guess I would ask the board if you have any questions of us and what your thoughts are at this point.
Um, okay, thank you. I, I'd like to um, I'd like to just ask you to comment on um, a question I have on the adequacy of parking. So there's 48 units. Yes, several units, and quite a few that are two- and three-bedroom.
We have only two, three-bedroom units.
Two, three-bedroom, and, but, um, there's 24 two-bedroom units?
Yes, that's right. So we have 18 one-bedroom units, 24 two-bedroom units, and I'm sorry, six three-bedrooms. And that's, that's a requirement of, you have to have some three-bedroom units in the mix. Dean can speak to that, but that's a requirement of the state for um, a reasonable distribution of, of.
Yeah, well, I, I was, I was trying to, you know, I, I'm saying you can't predict what's going to happen, but I mean, if you had, I quickly used up all 77 parking spaces. And I couldn't be wrong there, but I mean, I'm concerned that we, and there's really no other place to go in this section of town. So maybe you could just help me understand that a little bit?
Sure. Um, so we are for parking, we're proposing a parking ratio of 1.6 spaces per unit.
Yeah.
That is, that is very typical of these kinds of projects. These kinds of projects have parking ratios that range from 1.5 to 1.8 spaces per unit. You know, now that we have reduced the footprint of the back two buildings, we could add some more parking spaces if, you know, if that's something that um, the board or the zoning board through a hearing process felt was proven to do so. But what we, what we don't like to do is create unnecessary um, impervious services.
Right, we, we agree with that.
Yeah, so this is something that, you know, we have the room to add more parking if we wanted to. Um, we would, at the point when we filed a comprehensive permit application with the zoning board, we would provide a traffic study. And then that issue, and then as part of that traffic study would be um, basically an assessment from basically on uh, from traffic studies about these kinds of projects, what the optimal parking ratio is. And, you know, there's a, as I indicated, there's opportunity during that hearing process to add more parking if the zoning board or the select board felt that that was the right thing to do.
Well, I, I wasn't, I mean, I, I don't think that um, I'm not suggesting or questioning the, the proper ratio, but the general proper ratio, it seems to me, might have a different implication for a development such as this one where there really is no other place to park. I mean, if this is a different place in town where there was other parking or on-street or whatever, that, you know, then there's, for the occasional overflow, there's an opportunity, but I don't see that here. So, uh, that just might, at this point.
I just, I'll give you, again, we would, we can provide traffic data and traffic studies, but anecdotally, I'll give you my experience. We did a project on West Street in Menfield, which is not connected to Menfield Center. Uh, there's no extra parking anywhere around it. It had a parking ratio, I believe, of 1.7 or in that vicinity. And I drive through that project every now and again, and there's, there's always plenty of parking spaces. I don't see anybody in there parking where they shouldn't be parking, and it's not known, I don't see anybody in there parking where they shouldn't be parking and it's not known or I have certainly not been told by anyone in the town of Menfield that there's any parking problem over there. So you know, you know, there, there is hard data that supports these parking ratios. These, these kinds of ratios are very common in these kinds of projects and we can present all that data um to the town while we go through the comprehensive permit process. And there is room now to add more parking. So if we wanted to add another, you know, fifteen parking spaces, we could do it. Uh, I don't think we, we will need to. Maybe we decide to add another five spaces, you know, to get that parking ratio up a little bit more, but.
Okay, um, that was my main question at this point. And now I would like to ask McColly's, uh, Mr. Germaine, you have some questions you'd like to pose?
I don't have any particular questions at this time. I actually look at it and think, if we have to have more parking, which we won't really know until the units are filled, I believe Mr. Merrick has answered my concern as to whether we could absorb more in that area. But I also agree that I don't feel compelled at this stage to press the issue. Let's see what happens. I think we're close enough using numbers that have been used elsewhere. Obviously, nothing's perfect and we won't know until the last moment anyway.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, but if there's some flexibility as it unfolds, that's different than, you know, there's no way out. I mean, that's, it does seem, I don't wanna take the green space away either. I mean, I'd rather have that, frankly, for residents.
One of the things that we've done, Mr. Chairman, on past projects is we've, we've designed for drainage purposes, future parking spaces. So you know, drainage design is predicated upon the types of surfaces that are constructed, grass, um pavement, concrete, et cetera. Uh, one of the approaches that we've done on other projects is to tag, you know, a half a dozen potential future parking spaces that could be constructed at a later date if they needed to, and we designed the drainage system to accommodate those spaces right up front, so that if, if the, uh, if the complex ever decided that they wanted to build those spaces, they would be ready to just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, that's good. I do have one comment, if I may, and that is, I was pleased to see the redesign in the building, particularly at the sides, so they don't look like a big slab sticking up there. Um, and I appreciate that, at least that's my personal opinion, but I appreciate the fact of the aesthetics for the area and the way that that tries to make it break up a little and blend in somewhat with the rest of that area.
Ms. Underhill, you have some questions you'd like to pose?
Uh, I think so. Um, the first question may very well be a silly question, so I apologize in advance, but with the parking questions that have been asked, how does it work with um, like, is there guest parking if somebody ever has a get-together at their house? Or would that be an issue based on the ratio and the number of um units?
Um, that's kind of an operational question that we could explore in greater depth. I mean, a lot of these developments don't assign parking spaces necessarily. Or maybe they might assign one space per unit and then the rest of it at all is all just, you know, additional parking to be used as needed.
Okay. Um, my other question, and I can't remember exactly the details, but I believe last time we talked about this, we might have talked about um a crosswalk or sidewalks or where this was walkable to try to get to downtown area. Um, have, am I making this up or is this something we talked about?
No, this is something that we talked about.
Okay, good. Are there plans to put the, a crosswalk somewhere in here?
Yes, we can do that. You know, there's already a flashing light up there. Um, we certainly can add a crosswalk and signage and, you know, any reasonable combination for uh to get from this side to the other side.
I think that's all I had right now.
Well, I would like to say, you know, the, this is an issue that I think will be important for us to uh understand because the flashing light is up there because, you know, a gentleman was killed up there. Um, so, and that's because this is an area where, you know, there's a lot of cars that are going way too fast. So whether or not we need to actually go beyond that and actually put a light up is a different question.
This is something that we would, we would bring our traffic consultant in who has a lot of experience with traffic signage and they would make recommendations to the town about what the best approach would be with respect to signage and crosswalks and lights and, you know, perhaps there's additional signage at the crest of the hill, which is um further to the east of the project, which is where that traffic is coming from, where, where, you know, that's how the nature of how that accident happened.
Yep, yep.
So our traffic consultant would make a recommendation, the zoning board would then, I'm sure, engage a peer review consultant who would also involve a peer review of traffic and they would weigh in on that topic and they would provide guidance to the town about what the, the best way to do that would be.
And this project is planned to utilize town water and town sewer, right?
Correct.
So again, we're, we all are familiar with our sewer issue, our sewer capacity issue. Um, so we are, you know, if we elect to go forward with this, we're, we're pushing the envelope still. And we would be interested in, uh, you know, what things can happen, uh, you know, on the property or in the unit, you know, that would allow the units to come in way below the, you know, the, the reserve flow that the Charles River folks keep trying to impose on us.
The water-saving fixtures and things of that nature?
Yes, yes.
We can certainly talk about all those things during the comprehensive permit and, you know, create some, craft some conditions that will um address those topics.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Germaine?
Along those lines, are there any state guidelines along the lines that say, well, if it's a LIP project, some of these rules can be waived a bit or can, there's some flexibility in this area?
You're talking about with respect to sewer?
With respect to sewer, correct. I apologize.
Well, I don't think there's a rule uh necessarily here. I mean, I think you're, you're looking at a um, a projection of uh prospective future usage. And I think that, you know, I think that your, your contract with the district is simply pertains to actual discharge. So I think this is something where, you know, the town has some, some leeway in, in managing its um, its sewer connections. So you know, as, as every day goes by and every week goes by, another unit is added on in Acorn Place or up at the Toll Brothers Project and more of that paper capacity that's on the books is being freed up, you know, because those units aren't using what they're projected to use. So just in the last six months, when we've been having these conversations back and forth about different projects, I bet a bunch of capacity's been freed up. And I'm sure you haven't tallied that up yet. Um, so I think you do have leeway. I think you certainly have discretion to uh, you know, to go ahead with a project like this and uh, you know, to incorporate, you know, protective measures like we talked about, water-saving features, fixtures in the units, and then also the applicant willing to donate some funds for the town to use in II removal, which we then free up more capacity.
I think we also have to look at it, yeah, there's discretion, but that's part of what this committee has to make a decision on and that's what we're discussing right now, is that even if we butt up against what are considered the limits, whether we like them or not, we can make some decisions on our own and we'll move forward accordingly.
Yeah, I, I think we've certainly had a, a discussion, we've isolated the problem, and I don't mean with this project, but the general problem. Um, I agree with Mr. Merrick, the development is really moving apace. I happened to drive uh through the Acorn Place, hadn't been there in a few months, and I'm just really not surprised, but I'm like, oh my goodness, this is really, really moving quickly, um, let alone the one over the, you know, the Regency, which I know is moving quickly. Um, so the developers are, and everyone we add, right, in a sense, is a win because they use less sewer, actual sewer than when, than what we had, than what we had reserved for them. So not saying the only reason to accelerate these projects is to free up sewer capacity, but certainly turn it out that way in the short run anyhow. Um, let me ask you a little bit, Mr. Merrick, about um, just to understand sort of the way, this is gonna be owned by the developer or some development company and is a pure rental, is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Aramo, he's a local builder and he's looking to uh invest in um rental projects. So uh he will own and operate this development.
Okay.
So this is, you know, it's a little different than I think some of the ones you might see, but yeah, he intends to build this project himself and to operate the project himself. It will be all rental and that means that all forty-eight units will go towards the town's um affordable housing count.
Which, from the town's point of view, is a very big step forward, uh, that's for sure. Uh, because we can, as our housing production plan indicates, you know, we're interested in these kinds of projects um to the extent that they can make compatible with the neighborhood and whatnot that they're located in. Now, it's gonna be, because it helps us meet our goal, uh, both from the point of view of the goal as well as just having a, you know, a diverse community with housing that's available uh to folks, whether they be, you know, young people or whatever. At this point, we see that um, not quite, but sort of, we are aggressively addressing the over fifty-five group, um, of which at least two of the members of this board are happily members of, um, but.
Don't go too far in the happily.
Not so happy, right. What is, is, is there any, you know, the general, well, I know it's an unfair question, you know, what kind of tenants would you expect to attract to this? I assume it's younger, but I, I don't know that, because I'm not a real estate developer.
Well, I mean, these, you know, seventy-five percent of these units are gonna be market rate units, so they're, they're the kinds of tenants that would occupy any apartment. The affordable units uh honestly tend to go to a lot of people who work in town.
Yeah.
Um, who don't make, you know, very high wages. You know, it's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of teachers and uh police and fire and you, it's very common to find a lot of those um families and, and individuals qualifying for the affordable units. Um, so it's, it's, you know, it's a nice way, no, this is, this is an expensive area, let's be honest. And um it's a nice way for the people who work in this area but can't afford market rate units to be able to live near where they want.
And Mr. Chairman, may I add, under the regulations, you are allowed as a community to basically set aside seventy percent of the units as um for local preference. Um, if the, if the community can show the need um to support the seventy percent, you can go up to seventy percent of the units being um reserved for um local preference of the affordable units.
There'll be twelve affordable units and that means that up to eight of those could be specifically set aside, set aside for local preference.
But that's a preference as opposed to it's, how much of a straitjacket is that on the, on the developer? Or is that something?
It's, it's really not.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it's, the difference now is before a town could just state it, nowadays you do have to show that um you have a demand, but if you have a housing production plan, that shows a necessary, um, that you have the demand that you need.
Okay. So that might stop. Yes, Mr. Germaine?
I'd like to ask one more question, if I may. On the water distribution, as you point out, Mr. Merrick, um, it's, your estimated cost is what, a quarter of a million dollars to upgrade the system accordingly?
Well, that's what, that's what Mr. McKay indicated.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't, I haven't priced it out or anything, you know, you had, basically you have a, you have a new water main that you just recently installed.
Right.
That connects the town center with this whole area of town and Mr. McKay would ideally like to connect an additional loop to tie that back. Um, so again, he indicated to me um that he thought it might cost a quarter of a million dollars or so.
Well, the reason I'm asking is for just that. The additional loop, and I don't know enough about these things to ask an intelligent question, is that a necessary thing? Is it something we should be doing? And is this a reasonable um build-out in your estimation? I'm, I trust Mr. McKay, I just wanna hear your side of it.
Well, um, it's a, it's a redundancy thing. And I mean, yeah, you just installed a new water main that's made out of Dr. Lion, that's designed to last a hundred years. Uh, it doesn't mean they don't break from time to time, you do get breaks from time to time and leaks from time to time, but the water mains, they last a long time. So the, the nature of the issue, as I understand it, is, you know, if you had a break or a leak and you had to shut down that single pipeline that leads from the center of town out to this area, that that would put all those uh homes out of water for some period of time. Usually a modest period of time, a matter of hours. Um, and if you had an additional loop, what it does is it, it reduces the potential that if there were a break, then it reduces the number of people that might be out of water. So it's a, it's a question of redundancy. Is it, is it necessary? I would say no, it's not necessary. You have, you have water mains that supply a good number of homes out here. Uh, it's a brand-new water main. But I do certainly understand um the director's preference to add redundancy. It's, it's certainly not a bad idea.
May, why, let me ask it a different way, and again, this is my lack of knowledge of these things, but could not a well be drilled that could be temporarily used if necessary as an alternate source only in the event of a break in the water main?
Um, that would be complicated.
Just asking.
That would be, that would be complicated.
Okay.
That would be complicated.
I don't mean to get into technical, I just wanted to ask it.
Yeah.
I'll take it off the table, thank you.
Um, Mr. McKay, are you on, that you might wanna weigh in on this a little bit so you could let us know what your concerns are?
Cool, thank you. Um, I have not been adequate, adequately been given an explanation to my requests of both the infrastructure of this project. My belief is that what a service, we don't know of a project of a three-story structure of, of three different buildings with three structures, three stories, is there gonna be an adequate amount of water pressure for this project. Um, the lift station cannot handle the sewer flow that's coming down from this project. We know that, Mr. Merrick knows that, that this, um, so you're looking at, you know, if the town buys into this, you know, who's gonna pay for this infrastructure? Um, we get it all built, he's got everybody rented in there, and we're stuck with people on the third floor and not having enough water pressure. As I just told you, the, the lift station at Dover Road cannot handle forty-nine apartments, whatever how many bedrooms they add to it or not. Uh, another thing you must negotiate, the tie-in fee right now for each unit is six-thousand five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. You impose that on other developers, that they had to pay this tie-in for each single unit. That's been explained to the developer and Mr. Merrick. Um, so if they have to come back and say that they wanna give us, I think he said two thousand something dollars, you know, the rate payers, the water sewer and rate payers are already losing four thousand plus dollars off of what an initial tie-in fee would be for a, a, a single unit. Um, again, I, I, I think that it's a great project, I'm not saying no, but I think there's a lot of ifs, and I don't think Mr. Merrick, it's great, you know, he's an engineer working for the developer. I think we need to, and, and, you know, before you make a decision, I would ask that Mr. Connor take a look at this project, um, to see if there's adequate flow. I would do a water pressure test in that area before you, you say yes to this. But I have to tell you, the sewer system, the, the lift station, it's not big enough and I have not heard how that's gonna be addressed. And again, like I stated, Dan knows that. We, you know, the water main that came, the new water main that Dan's talking about is when, when I was on the planning board, the developer of the uh assisted living project, he put that water main in place. He put the sewer main in place and he had to pay for all of that, whether it was not effective, a, a good practice for him or expensive-wise, he was forced to do that to build his assisted living project and it did not cost the rate payers one single cent. This project, if it goes through, it's gonna cost the rate payers an upset, you know, a lot of money in, in the long run unless this contract is, is told that he has to pay for the upgrade of the lift station. And again, prove to me that, that, that those people on the third floor in the county unit is gonna have enough water pressure before your vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Merrick, yes, go ahead, Mr. Merrick.
So I, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on this topic. Um, the applicant would be paying the regular fees for connection for units, the two thousand dollars was offered as a supplemental payment. So um that would be in addition to the normal connection fee. So, um, that would be in addition to the normal connection fees per unit. Um, with respect to the, uh, the water, we certainly will do a study. Um, we'll do a pressure test, uh, if there's a pressure issue, um, on the site. Uh, we can remedy that with a pump station on the site. You know, and we can increase the pressure on our site if needed. I don't think that's gonna be necessary, based on what I know about the area, but we will, we will go out and do a fire flow test on the hydrants out there. And we can, you know, that can be remedied, um, with equipment. With respect to this sewer pump station, uh, at the Dover Road intersection, I'm, I'm very much aware of that issue. So, uh, it's kind of a timing question, because we have another project in town that I'm working on, a subdivision, uh, in the Cottage Ave area. It's been, it's been partially permitted. That developer has committed to replacing that pump station. So, I think what would happen is that this project would find itself in a similar situation to the assisted living facility, where they would, you know, it, it depends on the timing of all the permits between the two projects, but perhaps they would, you know, agree to construct a holding tank if it became necessary because of the timing of the other project. Um, the way that works is, you know, they, they build holding tanks on the site, discharge your sewer into the holding tank during the day, and at night, when the pump station isn't working very hard, you discharge your sewer to the pump station. So that allows the capacity of the pump station to accommodate the project. My sense, however, is that all of this is gonna come together at the same time. Um, and, you know, part of that ninety-six thousand dollars in excess connections fees, um, you know, obviously could go towards, um, the improvement of the Dover Road pump station. But as it stands now, the other project has committed to replace that pump station. And we're in the process of designing that other project. It's a forty-four lot subdivision. Um, and that, I anticipate, will begin permitting, um, at the beginning of next year. At the same time, if you supported this project, we wouldn't, probably wouldn't get into permitting with the zoning board until the beginning of next year anyways. Our next step in the process is to file an application with the state. The state has to review it and approve it to move forward. And at that point, we prepare a more detailed design, and we submit a comprehensive permit application to the zoning board. And there's a whole public hearing permitting process there. So I think all these things kinda happen together. And, uh, I guess my only point on the water connection was, you know, I don't think this project can absorb the cost of building that entire quarter of a million dollar, uh, loop. They're, they're willing to contribute, you know, a fair amount of money to that, given the size of the project, uh, which is why this applicant has offered up an additional two thousand dollars per unit, ninety-six thousand dollars to address, you know, give the town the ability to do some I.I. removal and maybe put some funds away for a future water main, um, uh, extension project in this area. But the pump station issue will get resolved one way or another, whether it, whether it's by the other developer just replacing that station outright or by this applicant making some temporary measures, um, like the assisted living facility had to do, uh, in the meantime, while we wait for that other project to get approved and permitted and under construction.
Mr. Chairman? Are you muted? If I may?
Mr. Jermaine?
Me? Perhaps, and I don't want to overstep on this, but perhaps these issues we could resolve, or we could discuss at a lower level at our enterprise meeting and hash them out, so that when we next come to the board, we have answers that Mr. McKay, in particular, who is a member of that committee, can answer to this board. But we're getting, I think, to resolve this, my view at this point is there's a lot of details, certainly I don't understand, and Mr. McKay does, that perhaps we could go, uh, into discussions and work out the details with Mr. American and the others. And once we're satisfied, we have answers, then come back to the board, where at least we're all in a position to actually take some votes on this.
Mr. Chairman, may I explain the process just a little bit? Because I, I, these are all good, detailed, technical questions. But kind of what we're asking for to understand the process, under a LIP application, what we're asking for now from the board is really just a support of a preliminary, um, project in that the support for the affordable housing. Um, it does not tie the town to any other future approvals. So you're just approving us to submit an application to the state under the LIP program. Even with that, after you, if you endorse the application, part of the process after that is the state will reach out to the town to ask for your concerns, or your questions, or your issues with the project. Usually, at that time in the process, the town will do a detailed letter asking or identifying issues that have come up as part of this initial, um, discussion to be further addressed by the applicant during the comprehensive permit process. So the board is not endorsing the project as it is affordable project, be brought upon under the LIP application. So I wanna make that clear. If I, the board endorsing us just to supli, to sign and submit the application doesn't give us any sort of extra advantage of getting through the zoning board and doing all the detailed, um, analysis, reviews, peer reviews, based on those issues. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that everyone was aware of the full process.
Yes, thank you. I, yeah, the issue is, you know, this is a, this is a prolonged process, I understand that. This is a first step or a second step. The question for the board is, what, if any additional information would we would like to see before we take the first step? And it, there was a suggestion made that, that we have our own engineer take a look at just the outline of this. How long would that take? Is it something that really holds up everything? Can we, um, at least have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Carter and you folks to determine whether or not, um, we are committing ourselves to something that we might not be able to execute?
So, a- as Dan and Dean, as a Dean, both, what, that, that can be worked out later, because they're still gonna have to come back with the water and sewer extension permit for you, uh, to look at. So that, that could come back at a, at a later date. Um, you know, I have talked to Dan about this several times, and, and the one good thing I got out of this is the, the, the tie-in fee for each of the units, units, I didn't think we were gonna get that, so, um...
You just got a quarter of a million bucks.
Yeah. I just added it up on my phone. That's what I was doing, I was looking down, so, um, I...
I did too, by the way, which is why I looted myself. So, great minds thinking the same, correct?
So, I, I think that, you know, Dan and Mike work very well together. They can work this out, you know, the project can be done. Um, and like even what Pete recommended, you know, it would be a topic of, of, of discussion at one of our next future meetings. I, I know the process, and I know that this, you know, you can still pull out of this whole thing if this all doesn't get worked out in, in the future.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
There is a question through the chat that came in. It says, "Through the chair, does the Charles River Pollution Control District have to pre-approve the project, given that Milis is at its sewer capacity now? What are the ramifications to the town if we proceed?" Uh, and then the Charles River District folks come back to Milis, hold us in violation of our sewer, sewer access threshold, and either fine Milis per day or pull out the town's sewer access permit? What does authorizing sewer for this product today mean for other residential subdivisions that are already in queue? Thank you.
So, this is not part of our, our original, uh, study, the sewer study? This would, you know, we're, with the study, you know, Dan mentioned the other project, and by the laws that we, we, we choose to use, oh, not choose to, we're forced to use by the Charles River, this would, uh, Dan, what's the capacity for forty-nine units? Did you have this worked out yet, or?
Yeah, it's, um, hang on a sec. So, the, using the Title V figures, which we all know are exaggerated, it's ninety-two hundred and forty gallons per day. Actual average flow would be four thousand six hundred gallons per day.
So if you use the, um, the DEP regulations, this would put us over sixteen thousand gallons per, uh, per our study. And we're discussing that, you know, how are we gonna, uh, rectify that issue? So, and give, does the Charles River give a permit for this? No, the, the, the Select Board gives the permit for this project, the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and they approve it. Uh, can they fine us? Uh, as we, I think they stated that never, they don't come back with a monetary fine, but they can, um, issue stern language of something, if I remember when the engineer came. Uh, it, it's not a monetary fine, but our, our, our limit is the capacity. I think everybody knows how I stand on that. It is a paper-driven thing, if, so, uh, and the committee is working on that, so we can institute the new, um, tie-in policy for the June Main Town meeting. I'm sorry.
And as I indicated, I think that if you drill down and look at the development that's happened over, just over the last six months, you probably find that much more than the capacity of this project has already been freed up. That's my understanding that, you know, your, your limit is an actual physical discharge limit of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons per day, and you're only now currently discharging an average of three hundred and ninety-four thousand gallons per day. So you're nowhere near, uh, violating the terms of your permit or your agreement with the, with the patrol business.
Regardless, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Regardless of the limits, I think at this stage, all we're committing to is, yeah, go ahead, if I understand it correctly from a perspective, we endorse the concept of the LIP that you proposed. That doesn't mean we've agreed that you can build it out or anything at this stage. So, I don't see the sewer capacity limit, no matter how we look at it, as being a constraint at this stage. That's something that has to be addressed, but I think, as Mr. McKay said, these are issues that we have a little time to work out, including what the new enterprise committee can look at for how we intend to proceed for the future for sewer, sewer hookups. Excuse me.
I, I think I'd just like to comment a little bit on the question as well, though. I mean, again, we're not violating capacity. We have, as an advisory, look at what we might generate if we allow these projects to go forward. So, um, we are, I think, being prudent and mindful of there's a potential limit out here that we have to be aware of. Um, and so that's why we have these conversations, and, you know, we've been having them repeatedly with developers who come in here, and why we need to look to them, not only to make investments, you know, in some infrastructure of pump stations and whatnot, but to really work hard to install onsite, you know, at the, at the site of the sewage production, you know, whatever it is, a high-efficiency water or whatever it is, we need them to do that, so that we can preserve as much of this capacity as we can. Um, so I, I appreciate the question, and the issues that were raised by the question are the real issues that we're grappling with here. I agree with my colleague, I don't think that prevents us, at this stage of the game, from indicating support for this affordable housing, uh, uh, complex. Again, given the fact that there's a countervailing interest here, and that is that our town needs to work on getting more affordable housing in the town. Uh, and the most efficient way to do that, it turns out, is through rental housing. So, uh, I think that is a, definitely a countervailing component of what we're trying to do to, you know, frankly, try to execute some of the housing production plan that we have developed. Um, anyway, so, any other comments from other members of the board or the public? So that, at this stage, what the developer has asked us for is a, a, a vote by the Select Board to support the, the LIP, uh, process or the LIP filing, uh, that goes to the state. Again, knowing full well that there's a lot of stops along the trail here. So that isn't, is accurate, is that correct, Mr. American? That's what you're looking for tonight?
Yes, it is, a vote of support, um, for the concept of the project. And then, um, Mr. Harrison has prepared the application form, and the town would sign the form, our representative of the town would sign the form in addition to the applicant, which starts the process with the state.
Then, I, if it's okay with which...
Yes, Chairman?
I'll move that we endorse this LIP project for this site, um, with the understanding that we're in favor of the concept, but there are a lot of technical details that have yet to be worked out. And in that vein, the board will endorse the project.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded that the Select Board vote to support the concept of the project for the LIP program. What's the address again?
Two thirty-two to two forty-eight, oh, sorry.
Right.
Sorry, go ahead.
Two thirty-two to two forty-eight Main Street?
Two, two...
Two thirty-two to two forty-eight.
Correct.
Two thirty-two to two forty-eight Main Street. And that's, 'cause I wanted that to get on the record as part of the vote. So it has been moved and seconded to, uh, for the board to vote, uh, the concept support for this LIP application. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
All right, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We look forward to working with you to work out all these details and, uh, hopefully generate a successful project for you folks and for the town of Milis.
Yes, it, so, we will, um, I'll submit the LIP application form to Karen later this week. And, uh, if you would like me to attend, um, I think you're talking about maybe the Sewer Use Committee meeting, um, Mr. Jermaine? If you'd like me to attend that, to discuss some of these questions about water and sewer, we'd be happy to do so.
That's terrific. I, uh, we have a chair of the committee, and I'll get in touch with her and ask her to, uh, schedule some meetings and have you involved so that we can get further understanding of what this means, uh, for the town and the costs and everything else. Okay, and I appreciate your willingness to work with us.
Right.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
All right, so with that, um, I'm scrounging around trying to find another item for our agenda, but there isn't any.
There is one. There's one more.
Oh dear, what is it?
You have to assign your motions, who's gonna speak to the motions?
Time motions.
Oh, no.
So close.
You can defer to next week if you want to, but it should be quick, I would think.
I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. Okay. Assume we forget. Okay, I need to pull something up here, 'cause I...
It's so early, I would hate to close too early.
Well, no, that's, you know, this is not, this is not, this is not an assignment that purgatory, okay? It's possible to get it done early.
Imagine that.
There are so few, I move that the chair be responsible for all the...
Aaron, second it quickly.
Okay, so, I'll go to the motions, and really the point here is not so much requiring a member of the board to speak to an item, but assigning responsibility so that if a question comes up that gets referred to the board, or the board feels as though it wants to weigh in at the town meeting, we have someone who is designated to do that. And again, we have nine articles, so it's not like we have a lot. Um, so...
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
That we have our newest member have the opportunity to pick first the items she would like.
Wow.
Thank you, 'cause you scared me for a second there. I'm like, oh no, what are they gonna make me do now?
No, we're not gonna do that.
Okay.
Nice thought. No, that's a good idea. Is there item, are there items here that you feel as though, um, you'd, you'd like to be able to speak to at the town meeting, or, you know? 'Cause I'm certainly not trying to dictate anything here.
I mean, uh... I mean, I hope this doesn't come out wrong, but there isn't necessarily a particular item that I have an undying passion about. You know, I'm happy to cover whatever. I, I'm certainly a supporter of number eight, but, I mean, that's a much smaller one than, I mean, to me, that's a, not really, probably won't generate much discussion or won't be much to need to speak to, but, so yeah, I'm happy to jump in on anything.
So you get eight?
Okay.
That's for sure. Unpaid bills, I mean, it's kind of almost, I mean, there's really not an issue here. And if an unpaid bill item is coming up, then this is going to be, my recommendation would be that we would turn to the town administrator and explain it, or the finance director, one or the other, because these are, I don't want to call them clerical, but I mean, these are really things that are about the processing of bills.
I can take one as well, if you'd like, I definitely do not want two.
I know two, all right. I will certainly do five and six as the select board representative on the permanent building committee. I think that's kind of something that I should take care of.
Pete's a former finance guy.
Pardon me?
Just saying, Pete is a former finance committee member.
Karen, Karen, I'm going to remember what you just said.
Pete gets item two?
Sorry, sorry, Pete.
Which is the budget items, and Pete, I think, you know, you've had a lot of, just like arrogance with police cruisers, certainly.
Why don't I just do two, three, and four?
All right.
That two, maybe I also want to go three and four.
So Pete will do two, three, and four. I will do the building ones, I can do trees too, if you'd like.
I can do trees, I mean, that way it's three each, it's divided well.
Okay, so Aaron's going to do one, Pete's going to do two, Pete's going to do three, Pete's going to do four, I will do five, and hopefully five will pass and we won't need six. Trees, Aaron's going to do? Then the bylaw change, okay. I mean, I can do nine. We don't typically speak to zoning articles unless we oppose it, but I'm happy to take it. If there's a question that someone wants the board, the select board to answer it, I will answer it. All right, so that's three apiece. Okay.
And I'm going to remember this.
Sorry, Pete.
Oh, no, I think that was aimed at me.
Just make sure you do a good job, or we won't give you anything next time, just do a good job. Okay, all right, folks. So now I think I've covered all the warrant articles, I mean, all the warrant articles and all the items on the agenda. Thank you for the conversation about scheduling, I really appreciate it, because I wanted to get some guidance from you folks, something with the best way to pull us together, and I do think if we are setting out, you know, a schedule, a structure for the next three months, it helps us with our planning, so, very good.
Thank you.
Actually, it's four months, November, December, January, and February, which is more than three months. In any event, I'm happy to take a motion to adjourn, since there are no minutes to review, Karen.
I have a whole bunch, but I'm just, I'm going to pile them on you is what's going to happen. We've had these weekly meetings, it's tough for me to get to them.
All right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
Second. The move and seconded for the select board to adjourn the meeting, I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next meeting, I'll see you tomorrow.
Indeed.
Yes, me too.
What? I can't hear you, you've got to go.
Okay. Good night all.
Good night.